Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our January 31st Regular Council Meeting. I want to thank everyone for being here tonight with us and everybody watching on Talal. So, bonsoir et tout le monde, bienvenue, merci de t'y recevoir. So, I will ask for everybody to stand, if they can, for the singing of "Oh, Canada."
Oh, Canada, our home and native land, true patriot love in all of us common.
Car ton bras s'est porté les pays, il s'est porté la croix. Ton histoire est une épopée des plus brillants exploits.
God keep our land, glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on...
Now, I will call on our CEO to do the roll call of councilors.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. District One, Shawn Sampson.
Present.
Thank you. Michael Dignan.
Present.
District Four, Warden Amanda Bombercat, Senate Regrets. And District Five, Counselor Brent Sampson.
Present.
Next up is items added to the agenda. Does anybody have any items to add?
Deputy Warden, I'd just like to add a discussion on two roads in Lordways that have been brought to my attention.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda with the addition?
I'll move the agenda with additions.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Counselor Dignan, Counselor Sampson. So, we have a motion on the table and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Next up is our review of minutes for April 25th. You would have seen that in your package, and I think the amendments in question are highlighted in yellow. Does anybody have any discussion or questions on those amendments? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to approve the amendments for the April 25th, 2022?
So moved.
Thank you, Counselor Dignan.
I'll second.
So, we have a motion on the table and we have a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Next up, we have the review of the minutes for December 18th of 2023. Is there any errors or omissions to report?
I'll move the approval of those minutes.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. We have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So, next up, we have question period, and this particular question period pertains to the items on the committee reports. So, if anybody in the chambers has a question, they can move forward and make their way to the mic, and if not, if you are calling from home, the number to call is 902-226.
We have no live stream tonight.
Sorry, no live stream. There you go. Okay.
We had to save Bingo. We had to save Bingo.
Yes, we don't want to interfere with Bingo, yep. So, yep.
We didn't want to mess with those people.
All right. So, no questions from the chambers? Next up, we have our Committee of the Whole reports, and I will pass that on to Counselor Brent Sampson.
Committee of the Whole report, January 2024. The committee met on January 15th, 2024. The committee discussed the purchase of property PID 752-20756. I move that council accept the recommendation from the Committee of the Whole to authorize staff to negotiate and execute the purchase of PID 752-20756 as discussed in camera.
Thank you. Counselor Sampson, we have a motion on the table, do we have a second?
Second the motion.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
The committee discussed low income tax exemption. I move that council accept the recommendation from the Committee of the Whole to have staff investigate the cost of such a program at multiple income levels and relief levels, and refer the information collected to budget discussions.
We have a motion on the table, do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Dignan. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
The committee discussed the Coastal Riders ATV Group request for a letter of authorization for trail access along municipal property. I move that council accept the recommendation from the Committee of the Whole to refer the Coastal Riders ATV Group request for a letter of authorization for trail access along municipal property to staff to investigate on an optimum access route.
We have a motion on the table, do we have a second?
Yes, I'll second that.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. So, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
The committee discussed the voting method for the 2024 municipal elections. I move that council accept the recommendation from the Committee of the Whole to use paper ballots for the 2024 municipal election.
We have a motion on the table and we have a second.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on the motion?
You want to go first? Yeah, Deputy Warden, thank you. The, I see the motion on the table, however, I thought we were, the discussion was to go back for the purpose of getting prices for the electronic ballot as well, to see where we were going to, whether we were going to move forward with the electronic and the paper ballots. Maybe I misunderstood last, last meeting, but I was under the understanding that was the whole purpose of going for the...
Yeah, so there was some discussion of that, and we have got some emails. It looks like we're running somewhere in the range of probably 15,000 to 20,000. My personal opinion on this, I think if we had lower turnout numbers, it'd be something to definitely consider, but where our voter turnout numbers are relatively high as it is, I don't think for that amount of money to burden the taxpayer with, it'd be worth our while.
Yes, I just wanted to share similar sentiments. I, I seconded the motion so we could have that discussion. I think that when you're in that hybrid mode, it's a really interesting place to be. A lot, you know, some of the communications that we've received from the clerk talked about, like, the uptake for electronic voting only, and I think that's very interesting. But I'm in, I'm inclined to think if it's not broken, don't, don't, don't break it. You know, how does that work? If it ain't broke, don't fix it. And I think if we had lower voter turnout, I would be more inclined to go electronic only because I think the cost of running a hybrid election is quite a bit because we'll be running the paper ballot election, which we already know has a substantial cost to it, and then based on some of the pricing that we've gotten, like, the electronic is fairly expensive as well. So, I think there was a discussion about that at the last meeting that we would ask staff to bring us some information so that tonight, when the motion would come to the floor, we could have a more robust conversation, if you will, about that. But my stand remains based on the information that we've received, that I do still support a paper ballot, only, again, I would say mostly because of cost and because of the fact that it's not like we're, you know, struggling to get members of the public to come to vote at our municipal elections. We do fairly well with that, so...
Mr. Chair, if I just may add for you as well, we pulled the numbers from the last election as well, and we did really well in, like, the four of these districts. You're, you're closing in on 70% voter turnout, and when we were talking to the folks at AMANZ and NSFM on the Intellavote and the other systems, they were really targeted towards the municipalities that are down in the 30s and 40s, and they will see a 20% to 30% jump with the e-voting. However, you guys are already there in the sweet spot that people are looking for in the first place. So, the gains may still happen, but they would be much more minimal for us with still a, quite a large price tag. So, again, just for information.
So, if I may, Deputy Warden, do we have the information from the election previous to the last? I just wonder what the, if, I understand the 70% voter turnout for the last election because everybody wanted to see a complete change in council. My, the thing I just, 70% is great, however, we're 30% below the mark of being perfect. And again, I think that that mark that we're missing is the, is the young voters that you're not going to see come to, come to a ballot or, you know, kids that are away at the time that can still do electronic e-voting. Again, I feel that, I know it's $20,000, but we spent a lot more for a lot less. I just feel that we're missing the, we're missing the boat on moving forward.
I don't have the information in front of me, but I, I remember from running that the turn, voter turnout has always been very good in Richmond County.
Yeah, and if my, if my memory recalls, I think I had over 1,000 in my district out of the 1,300 or something, 1,069, I think. So, yeah, that, that turnout was, was very good. And when it comes to, you know, as I discussed last time, Counselor Dignan, when it comes to older, older people or people that are away or students that are away, you can always have proxy votes and, you know, do it that way and get them to sign a proxy form, right? So, yeah, for me, I would, I would align myself with the decision to go with paper ballots and, and do as many proxy votes. I think it's, it's up to the, it's up to the, you know, the people running and the candidates running to make sure that they get all these people. We're giving all the information out there, we're giving electoral list, we're giving all the information needed to make sure that we get to all the people and try to, you know, try to reach, try to reach out to as many people as we can in proxy votes. Myself, I, I filled out many proxy votes last time, so for me to, to look at, and like the CEO said, for us to go from 70% to 75% or 76%, 77% for the cost of $20,000 to the taxpayers, for me, I'd rather just go the way we're going now and then go with a paper approach.
Your motion's still on the floor, and it is seconded, Mr. Chair.
Yep, so we do have a motion on the table and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carried.
The committee discussed the appointment of a returning officer for the 2024 municipal election. I move that council accept the recommendation from the Committee of the Whole to delegate its powers of appointment for a returning officer for the 2024 municipal election to the chief administrative officer per Section 4, 1(c) of the Municipal Elections Act.
We have a motion on the table, do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Dignan. So, we have a motion and a second. Have any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
The committee discussed the advanced polling day for the 2024 municipal election. I move that council accept the recommendation from the Committee of the Whole to see, oh, sorry, to set the other one, the other fixed advance poll day for Saturday, October 12th, 2024.
So, we have a motion on the table, do we have a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. So, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
The committee discussed the enumeration or use of lists or permanent register for the 2024 municipal election. I move that council accept the recommendation from the Committee of the Whole to proceed with option C. Use any permanent register of electors established and maintained for use in the federal or provincial election. If more recent than option B, use the list of electors prepared in the most recent federal or provincial election or in an election held pursuant to the Municipal Elections Act, and further move that staff investigate whether or not the complete list is used in its form or can be revised by staff for accuracy.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. We have a motion on the table, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Counselor Dignan. We have a motion, a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chair, if I may add some context to that. We did investigate on the list as well. The most recent one is the provincial one that was used, and the, the rules are clearly set out who can change that as it goes in. They'll look for changes right up until the day that the list is released, and then that final one comes to us as well. So, that, that's all set and good to go.
Thank you, CEO. Do we have any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
The committee discussed the tariff fees and expenses for the 2024 municipal election. I move that council accept the recommendation from the Committee of the Whole to delegate its authority to the chief administrative officer per Section 139, 1a, of the Municipal Elections Act to make, revise, and amend the tariff of fees and expenses and provide for a method of rendering and verifying accounts for payment relating to the 2024 municipal election.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. We have a motion on the table, do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Dignan. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried.
The committee discussed the grant request from Raising the Villages Cooperative Limited for the Type IV Regional Health General Grant Funds in the amount of $5,000. I move that council accept the recommendation from the Committee of the Whole to approve the Raising the Villages Cooperative Limited grant application for the Type IV Regional Health General Grant Funds in the amount of $2,500 and be allocated from the regional funds.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. We have a motion on the table, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
The committee discussed the guarantee for the Village of St. Peters. I move that council accept the recommendation from the Committee of the Whole to recommend the council to approve a loan guarantee in the amount of not more than $185,000 for the purpose of the village to conduct lift station upgrades and wastewater treatment plant electrical upgrades.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. We have a motion on the table, do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Dignan. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
The committee discussed Eastern Counties Regional Library request for additional rent. I move that council accept the recommendation from the Committee of the Whole to approve the, and allocate the funds to support rental fees for the relocation of the Eastern Counties Regional Library, Pettit de Grau Library, for a period of up to two months during which time the renovations take place in February 2024.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. We have a motion on the table, do we have a second?
Yes, I'll second that.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion?
Just a quick comment, because when we originally discussed it during the Committee of the Whole, we did discuss the dollar value of this, and I, I don't remember what it is, but it is quite a minimal amount, so I guess I just wanted to clarify that, that this amount that we're looking to provide for additional rent is fairly insignificant.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
This concludes the Committee of the Whole report for the month of January 2024, and I move its adoption.
We have a motion, do we have a second or another? Motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Counselor Dignan. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Counselor Sampson, for the extensive Committee of the Whole report. I don't, yeah, if the warden was going to pick an evening for me not to read the reports and me sitting this chair, she picked a good night, so, thank you again, Counselor Sampson. So, moving on, next is our Planning Advisory Heritage Committee report, so back to you, Counselor Sampson.
Planning Advisory Heritage Committee report. The committee met on December 19th, 2023, and January 16th, 2024. The committee discussed the road name change, Cairns Point Road, Cairns Point Road Extension. I move that council accept the recommendation from the Planning Advisory Heritage Committee to change the road name of Cairns Point Road Extension to Cairns Point Road Extension, which is omitting the E, and further move that council recommend to the province to change the road name Cairns Point Road to Cairns Point Road, omitting the E.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. We have a motion on the table, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion on the motion?
So, just for anybody, I guess, watching at home tomorrow or whenever, this was something came to our attention a while back, and it was just a misspelling probably at some point in time over the years, and residents along that road had requested that it be changed, and they, they went through the Eastern District Planning Commission and have followed the process to this point.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
The committee discussed the request to purchase municipal property PID 751-42133, Levay Count Lane, River Beaujouin. I move that council accept the recommendation from the Planning Advisory Heritage Committee to proceed with the process of the sale of PID 751-42133.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. We have a motion on the table, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Deputy Warden, the, this piece of property that's for sale, the, is it just going up for public sale, or is it going, like, I, what's the, I guess it's not, it's not a very common occurrence for us to sell property belonging to the municipality. I'm just wondering why, is this piece going out to everybody, or is it a...
It was, it first came, I believe, when the, some of the discussions were to, regarding how many units could be on a, on a property, but since it's an adjoining piece, they're adjacent piece to the landowner. That's why they have first, first offer on it, to my knowledge.
So, is that the, the land, so it's in between two pieces of property that's, there's a landowner on the left and a landowner on the right, or are both people given the opportunity to purchase that property, or are we just selling it to one?
Mr. Chair, normally, if there is a piece, the budding landowner is notified by EDPC to see if there is interest, so that both parties have a chance, and sometimes the piece gets divided in two if they're both adjacent landowners. I was just looking for the staff report on this one so I could speak with a little more clarity on it. I believe this was an adjacent undersized lot, so that's why it's going to the person that did it, and I'm, I'm thinking there's a road, so it's that house and the adjacent lot is ending it. I'm not sure if there was another person on the other side, or if we were the ones on the other side, so...
Yeah, so when I, when I look it up on, I just brought it up on Property Online, the, there's a land, there's a homeowner on both sides, that's why I just, and again, I don't believe there's a driveway going through. It's a 10,000 square foot piece assessed at $7,000. So, I'm just wondering, again, is the, is it a certain cost that we put on that, or is that, how is that usually handled?
As per policy, it'd have to go for, per market price, fair market price, and it would have been based on the recommendation from EDPC that came to our last PAC meeting. I'm just looking for my package on that.
I think it was in the December meeting.
I think it was in two separate meetings.
I think we did. Yeah, I think so. Because I think he handed it out that night, him and Michaela handed it out. Thank you. I'm doing, dealing with too many properties. I don't want to speak wrong. Okay, I can take notes for the clerk. Yep, not a problem. You can just table that one.
Okay, we'll just, yeah, we'll table that item until the clerk returns with the information, and I'll move on to the next ones, just so we can go through this report.
Yes, it was me that asked for it to be just set aside, so yes, we'll just put it on pause until, yeah.
The committee discussed the revised municipality of the County of Richmond Municipal Planning Strategy and Land Use Bylaw. I move that council accept the recommendation from the Planning Advisory Heritage Committee to proceed with first reading approval of the revised municipality of the County of Richmond Municipal Planning Strategy and Land Use Bylaw, and to schedule a public hearing.
Thank you, Councilor Sampson. We have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Diggden. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
The committee discussed the land legal document from in camera. I move that council accept the recommendation from the Planning Advisory Heritage Committee that the document discussed in camera be presented in camera at the next committee of the whole meeting.
Thank you, Councilor Sampson. We have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
Yes, I'll second that.
Thank you, Councilor Sampson. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Would you like me to conclude? The reporter weighed on that.
Sure.
Okay. So this concludes the Planning Advisory Heritage Committee report for January 2024, and I move its adoption.
Oh, yeah, we still got the, that's right, we can't, we still, yeah, right, sir. We still got the.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Yep, yep. So next one, Councilor Sampson, you're on the air again with the bylaw policy.
Bylaw Policy Committee Report, January 15th, 2024. The committee met on January 15th, 2024. The committee discussed the final draft of the Strategic Communications Plan and associated policies. I move that council accept the recommendation from the Bylaw Policy Committee to proceed with the adoption of the Strategic Communications Plan and associated policies.
Thank you, Councilor Sampson. We have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Diggden. Any further discussion on the motion?
It's only too bad that our clerk isn't in the room to see this one pass.
That is true, CEO. She worked very hard on that.
She did.
Yeah, yeah, so hats off to her for sure. So, yep, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
This concludes the Bylaw Policy Committee report for January 2024, and I move its adoption.
We have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
Yes, second.
Thank you, Councilor Sampson. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried. Thanks again, Councilor Sampson. As I said, if if the warden, if the warden was gonna pick an evening to have me.
My PAC stuff's sitting right on my desk. If you give me a second, I can do it.
Okay, yeah, yeah. So we will continue with item number eight on the agenda, which is a motion to adopt some of our policies when it comes to our communication plan. So when it comes to the delegation appearing before municipal council policy, I would be looking for a motion to adopt that policy as amended. So we have, thank you, Councilor Sampson. We have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Sampson. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Next up is our publication of council committee of council committee reports and meeting packages. I'd be looking for a motion to amend and adopt, sorry, adopt, looking for a motion to adopt the publication of council committee of council committee reports and meeting packages as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Sampson.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councilor Sampson. So we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried. Next up is our social media policy. Looking for a motion to adopt as amended our social media policy.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Diggden. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilor Sampson. So we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second? Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried. Next up is our website content and maintenance policy. I'd be looking for a motion here to adopt the website content and maintenance policy for the County of Richmond.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Sampson. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Diggden. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carried. Next up is our communication policy. Looking for a motion to adopt our communication policy as presented for the municipality of the County of Richmond.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilor Sampson. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councilor Sampson. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried. Next up is our strategic communication plan. So I'd be looking for a motion here to adopt our strategic communication plan as presented for the County of Richmond.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Diggden. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilor Sampson. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried. So thank you, Shelley, for all your work on, you were over the room at the time, but all your work on the communication plan, and all the work on your strategic plan, and so, yep, I can only imagine. So thank you again for all your hard work on that, and glad to see it moving forward. So next up is the first reading when it comes to our municipality of the County of Richmond Planning Strategy and Land Use Bylaw. So here, I would be looking for a motion to to adopt and approve that the municipality of the county planning strategy and land use bylaw.
So is the motion to approve first or to do first reading? Yeah, motion is made by myself.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion on the table for first reading of our strategic plans, and we have a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries.
There's the end, the further that we have to do the public hearing again as well. So that just means to be read as heard in the motion. It's almost okay with that, but it's just a.
Yeah, that's, that's why I asked, because I thought there may be a part about proceeding to a public hearing. So, yes, if the, then the nature of the motion would be to make a first reading and move it forward to public hearing.
And I think that was within our committee of the whole package, anyway. This was just first reading.
That, that's right.
Yeah, so we've, we've already approved.
We already approved to move it to, yes, exactly, yeah, yeah.
Sorry. So moving on to item 10, correspondence, not applicable this evening.
Late month.
Late month, and information purposes running there. So we'll move on to item 11 on the agenda, which is unfinished business, which is the topic of deer population. So as you can recall, on October 24th, council had discussion on some of the concerns of the residents of Al Madam and the residents of Richmond County when it came to the deer population in our area, and the dangers and the collisions occurring. So as a follow-up to that, staff had a meeting on January 12th with Elizabeth Walsh and Jason Power from Department of Natural Resources and Renewables, and also with our MLA Trevor Boudreaux. And from that meeting, we're looking to proceed with the cost of an initial survey when it comes to budget discussions. So I'd be looking for a motion that council authorize staff to explore the cost of conducting a survey and contact NSCC to inquire how the Natural Resource Environment Technology Program may assist the county in this work in this, this very serious situation when it comes to deer population. So I would be looking for a motion to move forward with that, please.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Sampson. Can I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Sampson. A motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion?
So, Deputy Warden, just for clarification, this is only so staff can come, come with a cost of?
If I may as well, Mr. Chair, through you to the counselor, it's also to, in our conversations with these folks, they mentioned that the NSCC has, NSCC has some programs with environmental studies to see if we can get a student, and if the, they have anybody enrolled at the time, and the timing lines up, that they look for this kind of work because it helps the students with their study and gives us the empirical data that we need so that we know what we're dealing with, so we can move forward.
And I guess I would just add to that, like, it could, that could end up being a no-cost event, because it could be work experience perhaps for a graduating student. So that would be five weeks of free work placement. So it may, it may just work out well that they have students looking for that type of work.
If I just may add one more thing, they did give us a ballpark price on the pellet surveys, between $6,000 and $8,000 the last time it was done. So with inflation and yearly, you know, under $10,000 should cover us for the study.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, CEO, for that information. So we have a motion on the table and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried. Next up, we have a review of action items.
Mr. Chair, do you want to go back to that question?
Yep. Oh, yes, okay.
So back to under, item seven, under the planning advisory, the sale of land. In the PAC meeting, that was item six A, which was a closed session in camera, and when we came out, we were told that it was moved and seconded and for the sale of that property as per policy. So the particulars, I can't recall them, but I'm sure with the people that were there, that it passed all the marks for us to sell it. So I can confirm that tomorrow, and get back to you. But, you know, if we're selling land, we have a process to follow, and we follow it, and so does EDPC. So that's the best I can give you. Because it was closed session conversation, and that was probably, those papers would have been taken back.
Yeah, so I, again, just sitting in this seat where we represent the, the people, I would feel a lot better knowing that the person next door was given the opportunity to, that it wasn't just, and again, it's not like it hasn't been done in the past. So that's why I would, that the piece of property wasn't just sold to somebody directly. And again, I would feel better knowing that.
Policy was followed.
Well, not so much our policy, but policy was followed, that, you know, whether a letter was sent to the abutting neighbor, or.
I have nothing written, so I can, I cannot confirm, but I have every confidence in EDPC that they followed the procedures as set out in their guidelines.
Just as a member of the PAC committee, both Councilor Sampson and I sit on that committee, actually chairs it. I'm, I am also fairly confident that the discussion would have been had in terms of what the policies and procedures are. But I think if it gives you comfort, which I think it would, I would propose an amendment to the motion made by Councilor Sampson that basically says that we would approve the sale of the property of that PID listed, ensuring that proper policies and procedures have been followed, and then you wouldn't, then it wouldn't be able to proceed until those boxes are checked. And then you wouldn't, then it wouldn't be able to proceed until those boxes are checked.
That would be great.
Is that okay with you?
I'm in agreement with that.
Yeah, okay, so.
Thank you.
All right. So we have that motion on the table with the amendment. Everybody's good with that? We need a second? Yep, yep. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carried. Okay, on to item number 12, review of action items. So any questions or concerns when it comes to the action item list?
Just to receive.
So can I have a motion to receive the item action list?
I'll make that motion. I don't think, I think we just, I think we just accepted as presented.
All right. So, no, that's, we're a lot mistakes here.
Indeed, sir.
So we'll move on to item number 13, which is the items added. So you're up, Counselor Diggan.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. The, so again, maybe this goes back to the planning commission, I'm not sure. But I received several, several calls and some of the people I work with on a discussion on Bona Road and Bona Lane in Lordways. And it seems like when 911 is called, whether the mistake is at the 911 level, they say Bona Road and then the ambulance or the fire department ends up going to Bona Lane and vice versa. So two weeks ago caused havoc again on a, I believe it might have been a structure fire, and they showed up to the wrong place. And then one was a medical call and they actually reversed it two weeks in a row. So the, I, I know the, the fire department or discussion from part of the members of the fire department was how does a person go about getting one of them changed? So again, I'm just bringing that to council.
So yeah, that's the same way as we've gone through before, just bring it forward to PAC. And, and they have a, EDPC has a process to follow them. That's all.
So when you say bring it forward, do you want a resident of one of the roads to bring it forward, or do you want?
So there's a process has to be followed. Part of that includes they have to have signatures from people on the roads and so on and that, and they've been informed of that if they want to move forward with this. That's the process to follow. We can't do anything at this point in time until that, that happens.
So very similar, Counselor Sampson, to Kansas Road that we just went through. Yeah, yeah.
Could I also suggest that, that either you reach out to or ask one of the residents to reach out to our emergency services coordinator? Because I think that's something that perhaps he could help figure out what the reason is why things are not going to plan. Because I think, you know, there are civic addresses on, on road names. And so what are, you know, perhaps the issue is what people are saying when they call in? Or perhaps the issue is something within the 911 system, or I don't know. But I would just think that he may have some insight and maybe some connections to figure it out.
I actually would think that may be a very good idea for the emergency management coordinator to kind of take the lead on this one where it's a public safety issue. And quite possibly, we could, I don't know if we could ask staff to have that looked into, that, that he may be able to do, you know, survey the residents to see if they want to change. Because ultimately, you have to have the permission of the residents living on the road.
You okay with that, Counselor Diggan?
Yeah, no, that's, that's great. As long as we get the ball rolling, it'll be nice to see. Again, maybe, maybe nobody will be in agreement to change the name, but we might be able to expand it somehow or something. I, again, it becomes a, you know, I guess if it's explained properly from our, from our emergency coordinator, then maybe they'll understand that could be them that has to wait the extra hour for, it's great.
So can we make a motion of that effect to ask, ask staff to see if that can be spearheaded through the emergency management coordinator?
Impossible. He could possibly do the report to PAC and then take it from there. All right.
Okay, yep. So we have a motion on the table. Do we have a?
Yes, I'll second that.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. We have a motion and a second. Hearing for discussion on the discussion, on the topic?
Mr. Chair, just for information as well, next gen 911 is coming to our province. But again, that works with the cellular phones. So that way the GIS of the phone gets translated right through to the 911 and out to the ambulances as well. So that'd be fantastic. But the thing is, a lot of these incidents still happen at home and landline does not work with the next gen 911 yet. That's what they're trying to work on. So we'll get there and away we go, but just not quick enough for these people that are waiting for help and people end up being directed to the wrong road. It's, it's a problem everywhere across the country, especially in rural settings such as ours.
Thank you, CEO. So we have a motion and a second. And do we have any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried. That brings us to our second question period of the evening. So if any members of council chambers here tonight, attending council chambers want to ask a question or come forward to the mic, you're free, you're free to do so.
I have a question based on what you just shared about the 911 service coming forward. Only because I've been coming for a while to the meetings and you, you're sharing that the next...
Yeah, no, if.
Jacqueline Girwar. I'm wondering, when you say the next generation is coming to the province and it's tied to cell service, I know that there have been some concerns on this council in the past about the quality of cell service here in our area. So, I mean, it sounds fantastic having that instant GPS location, but I'm, I've been hearing stories of people stuck on highways and not being able to access 911 service calls and 911 responding inaccurately to locations and things like that. So I think that if we're having that here, then, and I'm curious as to whether or not, I guess my question is, have we had a connection with Bell? Like council was talking about to improve service in the area?
Mr. Chair, through you, the, having Bell come present to our council with their plan is on our action list. And when I reached out to Bell just before Christmas, there is a tender process out right now. The province is looking to determine the gaps province-wide. And that scope of work is being explored. And until that closes, Bell didn't feel like they could come and talk to us about what's going on at this point in time. But they are ready to come when they can. And we look forward to them coming to see when we can improve the service in our area. Anybody that lives here, any amount of time knows you can lose, lose a call pretty quickly. And multiple times, just getting between here and Lewisdale. And heaven help you if you're heading all the way out to Forshu or, or down to lower Lordways or whatever, right, or up to Dundee. The problem is across our county, but we're not alone. The province knows it, Bell knows it. They're, they just have the scope of work. And once we, they have that completed, then hopefully we'll have a plan coming out of that and they'll be able to give us some actual information instead of platitudes.
Did Bell give you a timeframe?
They did not, oh, sorry. No, sorry, I, I got her now. I didn't catch the timeframe. I remember it being announced and it was on the radio back before Christmas as well. Normally, it's an eight-week thing. So if that was December, January, I would think they're probably close to that being awarded. But I have no problem, Mr. Chair, reaching out to them again, see if that's been done. And, you know, even just for information's sake, bringing it back to council. Because it is something that's on everybody's mind and it's, it's really important to us. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jacqueline. Any other questions from the chambers? Good job to you.
Deputy Warden, does the CEO want that in the form of a motion, or is he's okay just to?
I'm fine to take that as direction. It, it'd be good to follow that up where it's an action item anyway, and we have some of those ones that you'll see on the far right column. We're putting our last updates in there to keep you guys fresh on where we are on some of the ones that have been pending for a while. So we'll just update that with a date once I get it, and then that goes out to the public as well. So anybody that's interested will be able to find it in the to-do list.
Thank you, CEO. So being that there is no further business, I guess we will adjourn the meeting. But first, before I adjourn, just want to thank everybody for being here and the, the media and everybody here tonight. Thank you for your presence. Also want to thank the staff at Talal for bringing these meetings forward and, and bringing them to the households of Richmond County. So thank you, everybody. Have a good night, everyone. Bonsoir tout le monde. Merci d'être ici avec nous. Bonsoir.
Great job, Deputy Warden, by the way.